Now call to order the Finance Committee meeting of Frederick County School Board. It is 4:31 on April 3, 2025, and it appears we have an agenda before us.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda before us.
All right, well, second to motion, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, seeing none, we have an agenda. Before we get too far in, if she's going to catch up later on YouTube, happy birthday to Vice Chair Klein. All right, Dr. Hummer.
All right, Mr. Chair, yes, happy birthday to Mrs. Klein. We do have a lot of updates. There's a lot going on right now with budget, both at the state level and the local level. Mrs. Anderson and I have spent a lot of time downtown at Finance Committee meetings and Board of Supervisors meetings, so it's been a lot of fun. We love budget season, so we want to provide you guys with those updates in addition to these agenda items. The reason I mention that is, is there's been a lot of items that have changed here recently, so we want to make sure that as we present the information to you, we can provide you with updates as they're happening in real time, because as I mentioned, we just had a meeting last night. So first and foremost, we'll provide you guys with that update through the FY '26 budget, so Mrs. Anderson and I will both tag-team that and provide you guys answers to all of your questions, and we're still awaiting on some decisions both at the state level and the local level. We also have to have a conversation of the supplemental appropriation request, so it does look like the additional dollars that we'll receive for the bonuses will be coming through, so we want to have that conversation because that goes above the appropriation of what we received in the beginning of the year, so we have to ask the Board of Supervisors to essentially spend the money that the state is giving us. So we want to talk through those items. And so that will have to go to the full board for approval. We also have some unobligated dollars that we want to discuss with you all this evening, and then we will have those items go to the full board for approval, being the modulators next door at James Wood Middle School. And then we also want to have a conversation today about the weapons detection. So we do have some updates in regards to some conversations that came up last night from the Board of Supervisors, which we are very pleased about, and we just want, we want to talk through the next steps in regards to what that's going to look like. And again, Mrs. Anderson and I will both tag-team that, answer any questions. So with that, Mr. Chair, I will hand it over to Mrs. Anderson. Thank you.
So we'll dive into where we are with the FY '26 budget. So the good news is, we're getting closer to the finish line. As you can see there, our next point of business is the Board of Supervisors meeting next week, April 9, where we expect that they will adopt the county budget. And then we have two more meetings for the school board, in which the school board will have an opportunity to make any adjustments based upon what the county funds us, as well as make the final adoption on the 22nd. So I want to get you up to speed where we are on the state and the county budgets. So here, this is just taking into consideration our operating fund. You can see, we started the budget process in January, which was under the governor's introduced budget. And what you see here from funding sources is what it would take to fully fund the school board's proposed budget for next year. So we started out with an ask of the county of just over 8.6 million, and then February came along, and the General Assembly did some work and applied more state dollars for schools, in which that would have increased our state revenue for next year by 3.3 million from the state, which in good faith, we reduced the ask of the county, still, to fully fund your budget proposal. And what we have recently learned is that the governor had an opportunity to veto anything that the General Assembly presented, and that was in late March. And something that the General Assembly had added into the budget was to add more state funds to help fund support positions, because if you recall us calling about the support cap reduction that happened back in 2008, 2009 because of the Great Recession, the General Assembly wanted to put those state funds back in. And the governor reduced that portion of what the General Assembly provided. So there you can see, under the governor's veto, which is the most current information that we have, changes our ask of the county from 5.3 to 6.9 million, to fully fund your budget. So I'm going to pause here, because I know that that's a lot of information.
Mr. Chair, if I can add one more update that we actually just received yesterday evening, is the General Assembly has now passed back to the governor their initial budget proposal. So they have put back in the additional money for the support cap, and right now it's on the governor's desk, and he has until midnight of May 2. And we will see how that plays out. So it's right now, it's a little back and forth right now. So that's the most up-to-date information we have.
So if he were to take until May the 2 to take action on that support staff funding, where would that leave us with respect to question marks for how much we need to ask the county?
So that is a great question. So in our conversations that we've had with the county, we've been sharing with them that, based on where the state lands, we will definitely need more money closer to that 8.6 that we are requesting from them. Since we don't know where this is going to land, as you can see, the 12 million that we are anticipating from the state was added back on yesterday from the county level. So they added that three, well, it was an additional, well, it was 3 million, because it was initially only 9. They didn't even add the additional, what we thought we were going to get from them. So they added that 3 million on yesterday. So if, couple scenarios here, if the Board of Supervisors approves as-is, we would only be getting 4.1 from them, and then they've appropriated 12 million from the state. So if the state comes out after May 2 and says, "All right, everything is approved," we've been appropriated for that additional $3 million, so we don't have to go back downtown to ask for that money. We've pleaded with them last night to say that we need closer to the 5.3, because we're not sure if we're going to get that additional money from the state, and as you all had adopted, you requested 5.3. So we asked them to add on an additional 1.2 from the 4.1 they were initially going to give us. It went back and forth, and it eventually failed, I want to say, 6-1. There was some additional conversations they wanted to have in regards to moving some items to capital, which would be our buses, and there was a couple, there was a couple other items. They were talking about maybe moving back and forth to give us closer to the 5.3, but the additional 1.2 did not get added back on. So we're going to, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. We are going to talk about it later in this presentation about some scenarios, that if we only get 4.1, plus only 3 million from the state, we'll have to talk about what those additional cuts will be, or if we only get the 1.5 from the state, about what that's potentially going to look like. So that's where we are, and we pleaded with them yesterday, kind of like what you're asking in regards to, well, what if we don't get that money? But as I mentioned, it, it, it's right now, it's advertised as 4.1 that we would be receiving from the locality.
And so just to sum up what Dr. Hummer was saying, based on that 4.1 million from the county for the school operating fund, and what we know from the state at this point, which was the governor's veto, because the governor still has till May 2 to decide, that would leave us potentially with an operating budget shortfall of about $2.8 million, something that the board will have to consider at the next meeting in balancing the budget.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one of the things that I'm working with the county administrator on in the county is, is for us to have these budget conversations sooner. As you know, we are always in budget conversations to talk through what our needs look like, what you all would like to see in our upcoming budget cycle, and we are kind of working blindly, because we don't know what those revenues are going to look like at the county, so we don't even know where to start. If we can do that better, we'll have a better idea of where we're going to be, and then, so it doesn't look like such a drastic cut when it comes to April or May, when these budget decisions are made. One of the things that was also discussed downtown, which, which makes sense, but also it doesn't necessarily apply for the school division, which I'll explain here in a second, is that the county is looking at doing a formula in regards to county increases per department, and it's going to be based on an inflation, as well as the increase in the population, which makes sense, and, and that definitely is a good starting point, so you don't just have random requests from the different departments that are requesting money. However, when it comes to the school division versus the county, say hypothetically, the county increases by 1,000 families, that's 1,000 families, right? And that, that number definitely will drive how much more additional services that you're going to have to increase. So if an ambulance has to come out and service a family, it's going to be the same for no matter which family they visit. However, for us, if we increase by 400 students, as you know, that's not just 400 students. 100 of them could be students with disabilities. 100 of them can be students who are English language learners. 50 of them could be gifted. There are a lot of needs that come along with the services that we provide, so having us work off of a standard rate is definitely working against us, hence why we're only been given the 4.1, because that's what we were compared to last night, is they compared us to the other increases across the county, from the sheriff's office to the fire department to the county office, which they're all working just as hard as everybody else, and we get that, and we understand the competing interests, but there is definitely a different formula that the schools should be working off of because of those unique needs that we were mentioning. So at the end of the day, we are going to be thankful and happy for whatever the Board of Supervisors gives us, because it's definitely better than zero, but I would appreciate conversations a lot sooner, so that we can work through that, and then we can have conversations as a school board. You guys can have conversations as a school board, so we can get ahead of these things, because we did not know that that new formula was going to be utilized, which again, makes sense, but we definitely need to get ahead of that, so maybe we can come up with a formula that complies with that, that takes into everything that I just mentioned into account. So hopefully that makes sense.
It does, and I appreciate that explanation very much, and, and for those watching, especially out there watching at home, and, and Mr. Atkins, you, I'm sure you're probably going to have a comment or two on this as well. The idea that we are pitting departments against each other here in the county for funding, that sends some tingles up my spine, because that is not how government is designed to operate. The second thing that bothers me, the idea of a formulaic way of, of funding departments also doesn't take into account one of the things that we're dealing with here, which is our transient population. Folks that are not counted in official statistics, we are still legally obligated to provide them with a free and fair public education, and all of those things are not accounted for in official census data, population counts, and formulas. The last thing I would say there is that, while I do agree that I am thankful for the Board of Supervisors, you know, doing the hard work that they do, and funding the schools, I won't be quite as forgiving if there is this shortfall that was avoidable. As Mr. Bell, I think, said very well last time we were all together, we put forth a bare-bones, needs-based budget, and the idea that we can't fund a bare-bones, needs-based budget, and that we have cut the effective tax rate, I think, is as silly as it sounds on the surface.
Mr. Chair, so a couple of things, you know, I know that with this formula, I agree with you, Dr. Hummer, I think it does need to be a little bit different for the schools. I'm glad that they're standardizing something, though. That way, you know, we all know the rules going into the game. And I think, you know, ironing out some wrinkles, and I think it could work. But you also brought up, you know, 1,000 families move in, maybe we have 400 students out of there, you know, but some of these, some of these populations that are coming in are older communities, that could increase the tax revenue and not have an impact on the schools. And then we also don't know how many of those students would have disabilities, or, you know, it could be just an average student that requires no additional services. Is that likely? No. You know, we're always going to have somebody out there with a, a special need, whether it's gifted, learning delayed ESL, something. As far as transient populations, I, I think that, you know, we do have a metric that we can go by, and that is the, the student population that we give downtown. You know, I understand they might not be counted on the census, and, you know, that, that is a great point. However, we do provide a number downtown of how many students we have, and maybe they can work off of that. And I know our student population fluctuates and changes throughout the year. Maybe getting that information to downtown, I, I think that we're doing that, as far as what our student population is, and maybe that's on our school board members to be talking with their counterparts downtown, to relay that message as well. I think having those conversations amongst board members on both boards would be advantageous. I think we were doing that, and I think that a lot of us, school board members, have kind of gotten away from doing just that. So I know I will be reaching out to our member at large, and I will also reach out to my counterpart on the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Liero, and kind of put a bug in their ear, and, and see kind of where they stand on this, because nothing is going to get done without a good conversation and opening up that, that door. So, kind of curious to see where, where we go. Thanks.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes. So we just spent some time talking about the funding sources. We thought that this might be a good opportunity just to refresh the, the public about what your budget proposal is. So just a quick summary, just a quick review, the compensation initiative. As you can see, the pay scale averages for each of our groups there on the screen, as well as some targeted compensation initiatives for our most needed positions, instructional and bus assistants, changing their pay grade, as well as school safety officers, redesigning the middle school lead teachers to become deans of the middle schools. We've talked about safety and security, as well as the pay differentials for our special education teachers and instructional assistants in our learning centers. We also talked about staffing. 3.1 million is the ask for a net total of 40 new positions, eight of which are compliance-related, and that's our ELL teachers. So again, this is just to provide a reminder, a refresh, as well as our other items that were requested, some enhancements to instruction with a data management system and curriculum development and professional learning, four replacement buses, which gets us up to that replacement cycle of 13, safety and security equipment, as well as technology device refreshment, school nutrition transfer, and a human capital management system. So what are our next steps? Right now, our calendar shows that the full board will meet on April 14 to deliberate on, on the budget proposal, based on our funding sources and funding amounts. The plan is to adopt your budget on April 22 at your regular school board meeting, and so now we just want you to start to begin the thinking, get you talking on how to address a 2.8 million shortfall, if that is our reality.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I may, if you can go back one slide for me, Ms. Anderson. One date that is missing on here is, the board is still scheduled, Board of Supervisors, to adopt the budget next Wednesday, so we are all planning on going down for that conversation. So they are still on track to adopt it at that time. So once they adopt it, that'll determine how much they're appropriating, and then we will have the full board work session on the 14th to have conversations before you all approve the budget on the 22nd. And then, of course, if anything changes with that, we will let you know.
So if we do end up having to, to, to cover the Board of Supervisors shortfall, will you have a set of recommendations for us for how we might?
Yes, sir. Yep. We're going to talk about that here in a second. Yes, sir.
So here are some recommendations of maybe to begin your thoughts around closing that shortfall. We would suggest looking at the additional position ask, as well as reconsider the replacement buses, maybe divide that request in half, as well as take a look at the requests from the instruction and support departments.
One of, as, as, Mr. Chair, if I may, one of the items that I want to make very clear is that we are recommending that we do not touch the compensation packages for our staff. We would really like to just leave that alone. I mean, of course, we don't want to cut anything out of our budget, of course. And one of the other conversations that we had last night was, we, we were asking them if they could potentially take some of their capital and fund some of these, some of these items. So for example, I am recommending to remove the two buses that you all had added on, keep the two buses on, but we've asked the county to potentially use capital dollars to pay for that, so that'll be $300,000 back in operating. And then apparently, there were some proffer dollars that we weren't aware of that can be potentially used towards some capital projects. So I, I think it'll will get less than the 2.8 is what we're hoping for, but a, a large chunk of the money that will essentially be subtracted was going to be from the additional positions that we wanted to add on. Remember, it was only eight, that was from the SOQ, the other was the local standard, and then looking at cutting some other department line items. And that's one of the things that we can also do, as if you recall, there was about a $600,000 savings by going through our line items. We can increase that number as well, and that's one of the things that the Finance Department is currently doing through my guidance, to take a look at those line items and potentially cut some more money from them. What we're trying to do is have the least amount of impact on, on students. Again, as you mentioned, Dr. Erskine, I appreciate you sharing that. This was a very bare-bones, needs-based budget that we presented, so cutting these things is going to be very difficult and complicated, because these are items that, that we need. So we're trying to have the least amount of impact, and hopefully we'll get some more money from the state, because if we get more money from the state, we're looking at another 1.3-ish, right?
Then that would reduce the shortfall to 1.2.
Reduce the shortfall, which we can add on more positions and such, so that's what we're hoping for. But yeah, that, that's currently our recommendation. I mean, we can make it work, but that, that's currently what we're looking at.
So, a couple of questions. One, the proffer dollars that we just, we're, why are we just now finding out about this?
Good question. We just found out about it yesterday as well.
Right.
So apparently, it was some projects that they got for the Stonewall District.
Stonewall District, yes.
And they-
Everything comes out of Stonewall.
Yeah. And it was the first we heard of it as well, and they said that they would potentially use that money towards some other capital projects. Sorry about that. Some other capital projects, which again, we would then in turn get some more money in our operating. So we're waiting to see where that lands, but it was the first we've heard of it, Mr. Atkins, as well.
So with instructional and support department requests, I'm going to pick on Ms. Frakely since she's here, would that be something like the Human Resources Support Management System?
Right now, I've had conversations with Mrs. Frakely and, and Mrs. Knight, that we are going to leave those two items on. We are going to take a look at cutting some other items, as I mentioned, the line items, as well as some of those instructional supports. Again, I can't say this enough, I don't want to cut any of this.
Right.
You know, it's, it's very hard to prioritize the priorities. Like, how do you prioritize, you know, prioritize cutting those? So right now, we want to leave that on, and we also want to leave on the items for, for Mrs. Knight as well. I, I believe that we can look at other line items and, and get that reduced, so we're not putting, we're not cutting any other items that we put on.
Right. Yeah, and I'm not, not trying to take anything away, I've just, you were here. You caught my eye. So, no, I just, yeah, it's, it's rough, you know, because with that Human Resources Management System, you know, I think that that would help in attracting and retaining teachers and staff members. I hate getting rid of the buses, because it's just going to cost us more later. The, the positions, the request of positions, I get it. I would be more comfortable with that than anything else, and we can work toward it later. But yeah, I guess that's, that's kind of what, this, this is the hardest part about being on this board, is kind of finding stuff that we need and having to cut it out and postpone it. I'm glad that we're not touching the staff pay, especially our bus driver and the assistant portion of that. I, I mean, they've been, they've been kind of put on the, behind the eight ball for a while, so I'm glad that we're, we're able to get some relief out to them. So, yeah, kind of hoping that we don't have to do this, but.
I'm going to move to the next part of our agenda, is that all right?
Yep.
All right. So, just talked about FY '26. Now we want to talk about the current year that we're in, some additional state funds that we're expecting under the General Assembly, as well as the governor did not veto this, so it's in both versions. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Seibert.
So the state's providing us additional funds for the current school year for a one-time bonus payment that has to be paid out by June 1, 2025. The funding is based on a $1,000 bonus per SOQ instructional and support positions. We, as a school division, do have the discretion to determine the amount to help maximize the use to promote retention. The cost of the $1,000 bonus is estimated to be 2.5 million, and will need approximately 1 million in unobligated surplus operating funds to support it.
And we're going to talk about those unobligated surplus funds after, this is the next part on our agenda.
So these are the criteria for the bonus, and I'm just going to hit the highlights of it. A $1,000 bonus for our full-time employees who started within the first semester, and our long-term subs who have been subbing for us all year. And then we have a $500 bonus for all of our full-time employees who had started after the second semester, all part-time contracted and timesheet-only employees, as well as ours, long-term subs who worked at least half of the year starting after the second semester. You do have to be currently employed in order to receive the, the bonus.
Makes sense.
Can I just clarify something, just to make sure, just because I want to make sure that my understanding around this is correct, especially because of the SOQ number. For instance, if we, if the SOQ only calls for three, three of this position, but we have five, our choices are to either use the money and divide it among the five, because we won't get that money from the state, or find other money to provide the same bonus to the two that are above SOQ, right?
You got it.
I love being put in a position, as a school system, where we have to, to fill that gap. It's great.
Mr. Chair, this is what is called an unfunded mandate.
Yes, I love them.
So we could do a 600 and 300 bonus to not have to use any of the unobligated surplus funds.
Yeah.
So what we're asking from you is to forward this supplemental appropriation request onto the full school board.
Would we then, this then would go downtown?
Yeah, I was actually going to say that. So yeah, great question. So then what's going to happen is this would go to the full board for approval, and then Mrs. Anderson and I would go to a committee meeting downtown. We would discuss this, and then it would go to their full board for approval. Again, we are not asking them for any more money. We are asking them to sit, to spend the state money that we are receiving. We did, there was some topics of conversation that came up last week, just so that you guys are aware, at the Finance Committee meeting, where they were questioning how you all were deciding to disburse these dollars, and we explained to them that this is money that we are getting from the state, and it is the school board's decision in regards to how they spend that money. So just to keep that in mind, we're not sure how that's going to go when we present this, but there was already some questions about this bonus, that money we were getting from the state. I think there was maybe some misunderstanding about this monies, that it was coming from them, but it's not. It's coming from the, from the state. Now, of course, indirectly, it's coming from the Board of Supervisors, because we're using unobligated dollars, but we're not asking them to spend any more money or, or receiving any more money for it.
Sounds like a pass-through more than anything.
Correct, correct. That is correct. And then, so two other things with that, Dr. Erskine, is the first is, is we're currently working with the Board of Supervisors in regards to when they're having their next Finance Committee meeting. Right now, it doesn't look like they have one scheduled for May, so I'm going to work with the county administrator to do that, because their next meeting is April 16, which I'll get to in a second. We've been invited to that to discuss the weapons detection, which I'll share with you guys here in a minute. So if, if it, if that is their only meeting, what we might look at doing, and again, this is hot off the press, is we might ask you all to have a special-called meeting on the 14th, so that we can get you all to approve it, so that when it goes to the 16th, you guys have already approved that to go to them, if that makes sense. But we're still waiting to check with schedules and such. if that makes sense. But we're still waiting to check with schedules and such for that 14th. And if not, we'll just have it in May. The other piece is, is that as of right now, it's still on, both the General Assembly and the governors, they might veto this, which is fine. And then we just wouldn't, we would no longer move forward with it. So but it's good to get it done now, so we can get within in timing if it is approved.
So these are unobligated dollars, right?
So it's, it's two separate. So we are receiving 1.4 million from the state.
Right.
And in order to fund all of our employees above the SOQ, we need, we need to use a million of our unobligated to add that in. So it's going to cost us about 2.5 to get to 1,000 per employee. If the will of the board was, no, just use the 1.4 that we're getting from the state, it would go down from 1,000 to 500, it would go to 600, 300. 600 for full time, 300 for the part time.
And it has to go toward bonuses?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, we can't use that 1.4. That's, that's why I was saying it's an unfunded mandate. We have to use it towards bonuses, or we don't receive it.
It was very generous of the Commonwealth to volunteer us to spend more money. That's great.
I will share with you too, Mr. Atkins, that's a really good question that you asked. With conversations with other localities, a lot of them are not, aren't able to give them the full 1,000. Now, there's some other small divisions that are. So I think this would, that's why it's our recommendation. I think it would be a really good gesture if we can beat out some other divisions to get the full 1,000. So just something to think about as well.
Yep.
Mr. Atkins, are you comfortable with the making a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I just, you know, I'm, I wanted to go ahead and, you know, give this so we can help retain, maybe give Ms. Frakely a little help right there. I just, yeah, I'd like to see more conversation about it and with the full board. So I would be comfortable with moving this forward to the full board. So, Mr. Chair, I move that the committee forward to the full board, a request for the Board of Supervisors to approve a budget adjustment to the SCPS School Operating Fund in the amount of 1,480,000 for the provision of an employee bonus payment.
I will second the motion. Is the motion's been properly seconded? Is there any discussion? I would just echo what you said a moment ago. I think it'll be a great conversation for the full board to have, because I know that all of us feel strongly about supporting our staff and retaining our staff, and shrinking that number of unfilled positions for Ms. Frakely. And so this will be a good conversation.
Yeah. Yeah. It just, it's going to be tough to ask for that other million when we're behind the eight ball on some of the other stuff that might not get funded.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think that's a really good point. But keep in mind, the million is not recurring dollars.
Right. 100%.
Just to keep that. You can't use that for other recurring items. And, and this is two separate motions, too. This motion right here is to at least get us the 600, 300. The next conversation, which we're going to have here in a second, is to add the additional million dollars for further conversation.
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, this motion passes. Ms. Anderson, or sorry.
Thank you.
Ms. Seibert.
So next, we want to move into the final part of our agenda, talking about the unobligated operating funds for this current school year. So remember that our operating fund, our operating fund consists of 83% of it going to our staffing, right? So we often find savings in our current budget because of employee turnover, as well as our positions being vacant throughout the year. Just this year alone, on average, we had about 40 of our positions that were vacant all year. Some filled with long term substitutes, some filled with staff in house. So turnover savings, you know what turnover savings is, and we've provided an example here on the screen. We'll take Christie as our second grade teacher with 10 years of experience, her annual salary at 60,130. But she leaves us, please don't leave us. And then Tiffany is hired in her place, and she comes in with zero years of experience. So that is the turnover savings. And then, of course, say we, it took a month to fill that position, that's the vacancy savings on the position. So we experience turnover and vacancy savings every year. We do build our budget on having turnover and vacancy savings. So we're automatically reducing the baseline budget based upon what we think we're going to have, based on trends. And then amounts over budgeted amount is used to purchase needed items, because just like in our own households, we run into emergencies, unplanned emergencies. We have unexpected situations, as well as trying to address safety issues. And we're all trying to adjust to price increases. And then also, it gives us an opportunity to complete items that were requested in the budget but not funded. So here's our proposal of how to use 1.5 million dollars in our current budget that we have identified as savings. We're making a recommendation to use almost a half a million dollars to install modular classrooms at James Wood Middle School, due to the enrollment in that school and spacing in within the school. And then you heard Mrs. Seibert and Dr. Hummer talk about the state bonus initiative, a million dollars to round out that initiative so that all employees get 1,000 or 500. You'll see here that we were also considering using savings towards weapons detection systems. But we, we needed to use some of those funds to help our facility services department from some unexpected needs, such as water heater replacements. And I've got Mr. Davis here, should you have any questions about those needs for facilities. So we needed to divert those funds to support our facility services.
Mr. Davis, can you just tell us maybe just a couple of the things, just so we know, and the public knows where we're, where we're going to shift, potentially shift the money? Sorry to put you on the spot. I just.
Good evening, committee members, Dr. Hummer. So a couple of things that came up over the year. You know, on average, you know, we, we had approximately 12 water heaters. We had to replace 216,000 there for water softener systems, for roughly 80,000 there, approximately 25 heat pumps that went out or were postponed or were not operating. So we had to replace those, 125,000 there. Condensing loops for all the schools needed to be cleaned out, so that we don't have dirty water, scale water, and all that, which are contributing to some of these, you know, equipment failures. So we did that. Then we had to do a DOT recommend, or we were mandated to do a DOT course down at Transportation, which is only 18,000. But those are some of the big deals there. A lot of this was mechanical failures that, you know, we had to have hot water and cool and heated air in school. So it was unavoidable. It just, it needed to be taken care of.
No, I appreciate that. So for those watching at home, this is one of the things I've learned, I think, since being on this committee especially, is that we are really doing our best as a county. And I'm watching Dr. Hummer and his staff really do an amazing job at prioritizing things, keeping our buildings open and safe with hot water and heat and air conditioning. And unfortunately, when we, when we only ask for the bare bones of what we need, which as a taxpayer, I appreciate, one of the things we run into now is we're in a situation where instead of being able to give you that money that you need to do all of those, those buildings and grounds type things, we're also having to rob Peter to pay Paul, when I think the general public would love to be able to have these weapons detection systems in addition. And those are, those are tough choices that I wish we weren't put in a position to make. But as Mr. Atkins said earlier, that is, that is where we are.
And, Mr. Chair, if I can add to that, please. So one of the other items that I want to add about the weapons detection is we're still looking at our rollover savings now, because that's going to be more end of the year savings that we're going to have to potentially utilize some of that money for weapons detection. And I was in conversations with the county administrator about maybe an appetite for the county to take care of the weapons detection. This is a big deal for our community. And we know that we get a lot of support from you all, as well as them in regards to upholding that safety. Well, we were very pleased, and this did come out of nowhere yesterday, that we had a Board of Supervisor bring up yesterday about fully funding all of our weapons detection, which we were very thankful for.
Fantastic.
It was fantastic. And all of the other Board of Supervisors chimed in. And we, because we were initially going to say, well, if you can at least give us half, we can find the other half. But they're, they're wanting us to, they're wanting to consider giving us 850,000 for installing all these weapons detection.
That is great. That is great.
So where we're going on next steps from here, is we've been invited to a finance committee meeting downtown on February, April 16th. So we will be going to that. I had a conversation with Sheriff Mill Holland today, because they had some questions about the layers of safety we have, as well as these devices, which, by the way, we've worked very closely with Jason Cornwell and Travis Mitchell in regards to the installation, as well as with our team. And we are very confident these are the devices that we need in our buildings. Now, of course, because one of the topics of conversation is, is these, are these the best devices for our schools? And are there better ones out there? And our response to that is, if you're going to fund it, I mean, we'll, we'll take what you'll give us. But I want to be very clear to you and the public, we aren't shorthanding our safety and security measures. Like, this device does meet our needs. It also is economically sound. So we are very confident these devices will continue to meet our needs in regards to safety and security. So we're going to put a presentation together. Sheriff Mill Holland's going to join us as well. And then we will present to them, and hopefully, they will use some capital dollars to give us the full 850, so that we can start moving on this. Procedurally, you all have to approve that. So since this came from them, this wasn't a request that we went down to them, essentially, what's going to happen procedurally is if we have this finance committee meeting, I think goes to the full board, and they approve it, you all will then have to approve how to use those dollars. Now, it will be in good faith for you all to use those for the weapons detection. I would not recommend you use them for something else, because that's just good faith trust to work with them. But just so, because it typically doesn't happen this way. And it typically doesn't happen that the Board of Supervisors say, we'll give you money for X, A, B, and C. It typically comes from us requesting. So we are very thankful for that. We are very open to this conversation. And we're hopeful that we'll be able to get these installed sooner rather than later. We're also working on some grants to get some of those installed now. So we're currently working through that process. And then hopefully, we might be able to find some, some cost savings. So that 850 might eventually go down, or we can use that cost savings for something else, if they give us the full 850. So we'll keep you guys posted on that. But April 16th is when that meeting is.
No, I appreciate that information. And this, I'm so happy to hear that we're getting that support from downtown, because I think if there is one thing that we can 100% agree on, regardless of where any of us are coming from, is that we want to keep our kids and our staff safe. And I appreciate that, that help a lot.
Yeah. So I'm glad you went into detail about that, because I was, I was kind of hesitant about this motion, because if it meant taking away the safety and security of the schools, as we've seen, that we have, we have holes in the system right now, at the elementary and middle school level. Our high schools are really benefiting from this weapons detection system, I know that. But I want these things yesterday in our schools. So if we weren't going to be able to have downtown help us out, or if we weren't in the conversations of it, I wasn't going to make this motion. But I'll make this motion now.
Can I, before we move forward the motion, I do have a question about the modular classrooms, just because, well, for two reasons, not just the financial aspect of it, but just the planning aspect of it. Is this because of trying to compensate for overcrowding next door?
That is correct. So we are over capacity there, and we are going to continue to grow because of this end of the county. If you remember, on the heat map, all the students from Jordan Springs are coming over to James Wood.
I have so many students still coming over here to James Wood, too. So the follow up question, and I'm sorry if this is too in the weeds, is there any chance that we can reallocate, that we can shift kids around? Or is that not?
Well, so two things with that. On Monday, we have a Buildings and Grounds meeting, and we are going to be talking about the next steps with our redistricting process. We're going to have to get started on that process in September. And part of that process is going to be a redistricting for the whole school division. And it's going to come out in tiers, because remember, the elementary schools are going to open in 2027, the fourth high school is going to open in 2029. So it's going to be a tiered rollout of that redistricting, but it'll be done by 2027. And right now, as a county, we are at a 99.8% capacity. So sure, can we shift some students over? One, it's just going to shift the issue just based on the projections at each of those schools. And two, we're getting ready to go through a big redistricting. So if that is the will of the board, and you want us to move kids over, we could do that. And you want to save 466,000 now, we can do that. I would not recommend it, though, because again, we're going to put that community through two back to back redistrictings over the next couple of years. And it's huge. It's a significant shift. When we do a full redistricting, it's not just moving specific pockets of schools and neighborhoods, it's going to be a well thought out plan. We're going to seek feedback from the constituents and the families and the students, as well as you. And then you all will make a better informed decision. Whereas if we just move kids over, it's just going to cause for more longer, long term things. So to answer your question, sure, we could move students over. It just wouldn't be good for long term planning.
So at the risk of stealing Mr. Atkins' SpaghettiOs can, I don't want to kick the can down the road and just put this off if we're going to end up needing it later. So I want to ask an unpopular question, but a very serious question. When do we start having a conversation about middle school capacity, and a burgeoning conversation about a new middle school?
I, Mr. Chair, if I may, we, I'm going to use what you just said earlier. We should have been talking about that yesterday.
Thank you.
It is currently in your five to 10 year plan. If you recall, this year, we were asked to hold off on requesting any sort of capital dollars, because we had those three really big projects, which makes sense, too, because for our staff, we're working on those three projects. This next upcoming year, which I've already been in conversations with the county, we are in the process of taking a look at those next three projects on the list, which is the renovation of Bass Hoover, Apple Pie Ridge, as well as the onsite traffic pattern. So that's the next up on the list. If you take a look at when the middle school and the elementary schools, because elementary is also not far behind, middle school is the first one that we are going to have to take a look at. And our recommendation is, is that after these three projects are approved, that we have conversations with the middle school right after. But if we want to start looking at that now, we can. And I think it is, is a fair conversation. One of the other things that we're currently looking at as well, and having conversations with the county, is where. You know, we were very lucky to have the land for the fourth high school, because it was purchased so long ago. So right now, we're having conversations with the county about, we have a good idea of where it needs to go, because of where all the growth is in the county. And there's a map that I shared with you guys back in October. But we're taking a look at, hopefully getting some proffer land, so we can get this for free. Or if not, where could we find some, some potential land to, to purchase? Because land is going very quick. You know, we have a lot of, as you can see the conversations downtown about new developments and new businesses and such, we want to grab that land sooner rather than later. And of course, it's all going to be on the east side of the, the map. So I think it's very smart that you bring that up. I think it's very wise for this school board to consider those items, and we can continue those conversations. So that is coming up here very soon. Over the summer, we'll start these conversations. And then we'll start talking about how you guys want to move those items on your list.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things. So one, yes, the redistricting thing, we've, we have been talking about that in Buildings and Grounds. Our thought process right now is just pull the Band-Aid off one time, so it's less impact on the communities. And having that tiered system, I think, would, would work out really well. The next thing is, yes, middle school, we've had it on our five to 10 year plan for a little while. We desperately need to get that fixed. And, but, you know, how much, how much burden do you keep throwing on the taxpayer? Just like Dr. Hummer said, we just had the three big projects come up. I know, I know we need breathing room in the schools, but we also need breathing room for our taxpayers out there, so they don't get hit really hard all at once. I don't, I don't know when we'll get started on this, but it has to happen sooner rather than later. The next thing is, just kind of a, a side note to kind of what you're saying, I would like to look at where some of these students from James Wood Middle School are coming from, because I've, I've heard from some of my constituents over in Shawnee, where we shouldn't have any of our students going to James Wood Middle School, that they are going to James Wood Middle School, specifically over around the Lakeside community. are going to James Wood Middle School specifically over around the Lakeside community. I, I don't know how true that is, but I would like to look at that because I'm hearing that we do have students going over there.
I did. I was next to one. Kids coming up to Lakeside every day.
Did you?
And, and, yeah, we could, we could definitely take a look at that, Mr. Atkins, but one of the issues that we're dealing with is the location of James Wood Middle. Because if you had envisioned the map, and I, I wish I could pull one up here, but you have Winchester, which James Wood is in it, so you have neighborhoods on each side of Winchester to level out the number of kids that are going to each of the schools because Ailer and Admiral Byrd, I mean, they, they are very close to capacity as well.
Understood, understood, but that, nobody from Shawnee should be going over there. As far as every, every map that I've ever seen, we should never have any students going to James Wood Middle. Yeah, the, the middle school maps, like you said, are Admiral Byrd and Ailer for me. So I, yeah, if, if we get some clarity on that, and it doesn't have to come right this second, but we can get it later. I'm good. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
A motion for a recess? I'll second that motion just for a quick recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're in recess for five minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we return from recess.
Second, there's been a motion returned from recess, it's been properly seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you for indulging that request for recess, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Seibert.
All right, so where we left off, if you agree with how we propose to use our FY25 Unobligated Operating Funds, we have a recommended motion for you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I move that the committee move forward to the full board, a request to the use, to use FY25 Unobligated Operating Funds for modular classrooms at James Wood Middle School and to contribute to the state retention employee bonus initiative.
And I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and properly seconded to move this on to the full board. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes.
Well, that concludes our presentation. So we updated you on the FY26 budget, we're getting close to the finish line, as well as we talked about a supplemental appropriation request for the additional state dollars we receive for the current year, as well as our proposed use of the FY25 Unobligated Operating Funds.
Dr. Hummer, do you have anything else?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Mr. Atkins, any board member comments?
Thank you to the staff for putting all this together. I know it's not fun going back and trying to figure out where we got to trim a little bit, especially like Dr. Erskine said, with the bare bones budget. But this is the obligations that we have. So thanks again, happy birthday, Ms. Klein, and I'm good.
Great. I'll echo those things. I know that a lot of detail goes into this, and as Dr. Hummer said, a lot of this is hot off the presses. And, and for every piece that folks see here on camera and that we see here on the committee, I know that there is a great deal of time and labor that goes into these phone calls and meetings, and, and that's definitely not lost on me at all, and I appreciate that very much. One thing I would say to those watching at home is, please let this be another reason to respectfully reach out to your member of the Board of Supervisors and your member of the school board and share your opinions and what your priorities are for how we spend taxpayer dollars, to make sure that we're maximizing the efficiency of how we operate, but also that we make sure that we are meeting, at the very least, that we're meeting our, our obligations to kids and to staff. So with that, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Atkins made a motion to adjourn, and I'll second the motion. All, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we are adjourned.